Good evening, we'd like to call the school committee meeting for Monday, November 26, 2018, to order. Could we stand for the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, with one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being taped by Dartmouth students at Dartmouth High School for viewing later on Dartmouth Cable Television, also on the YouTube channel. We're usually on Dartmouth DCTV Wednesday, Friday, Sundays, and other times that they're able to fit us in, and we appreciate the good press. Also, too, if you have any cell phones, pagers, electronic devices, if you would kindly put them on, vibrate or shut them off, I would appreciate it. Okay, roll call, please, Ms. Conlon.
Ms. Conlon?
Yep.
Ms. Hannah Roll?
Here.
Ms. Jenkins?
Here.
Ms. Calafortis?
Here.
Thank you, and welcome back, ma'am. Okay, at this point in time, we've allocated some time on the agenda. If anyone in the audience has any questions or comments on anything that is on the agenda for this evening? Don't all speak at once, okay? I'll pick up time. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion for the regular session minutes of both October 15th and November 5th, if that's okay with everybody. Take those two in one fell swoop?
I'll move approval of the regular session minutes for both sessions.
Moved by Dr. Jenkins.
A second.
Second by Ms. Hannah Roll on the motion. Any questions, comments, discussions? Chair hearing, an all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. And the motion for the executive session minutes of October 15th, 2015.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval with the stipulation that they be
Held.
... held until the matter under consideration is finished.
All right. Moved by Dr. Jenkins.
A second.
Moved by, and second by Dr. Calafortis. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing, an all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, the student representative report. Shane?
Hello, Ms. Nunes.
Sir?
Thank you. Tonight's update for the Dartmouth High School will be short because we only have a few highlights since the last school committee meeting. First off, we completed a successful spirit week, which ended with a pep rally, and which the Special Olympics of Massachusetts presented Dartmouth High School with the National Unified Champion School banner. This recognition was only given to 131 schools in the country, and we were one of them. And so this recognition is a great representation of Dartmouth High School's commitment to inclusivity of all students, and we're very thankful for everyone at Dartmouth High School to get this award because we are only one of 131. So that was great.
Beautiful.
Our football team just played Thanksgiving game, and we won a close game, and we've won the past three years, so we're very happy with that. Today, all winter sports kicked off, so we wish them good luck and a great season. And then lastly, December 7th and 8th, the Dartmouth High School Theater Company will be performing a Christmas story as our winter play, and tickets are available online by visiting the high school's website. So that is all. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. Shane, do you know about the, it's the eighth grade showcase tomorrow night? Will, do you know someone like you involved in that, or?
Yeah, so at the showcase, I believe there will be students leading tours for the eighth grade students' families, and they'll be going on tomorrow. I know, so see Principal Chavier reach down to get that going.
Okay, good, thanks.
Shane, you weren't, I know you were in Boston, you had an appointment in Boston, and I hope it went well. One of the things we approved at our last meeting was the DECA students' to regionals and states and nationals type of deal, and just wondering if you can talk a little bit about that for a couple of minutes, about what DECA is and what you guys have done, and that type of deal.
I apologize for not being able to be here.
No, no problem.
Yeah, I had a scholarship thing.
No, that's fine.
More, more, yes.
No, no problems here.
But, yeah, I got involved with DECA last year, and I have to say, it is one of the best organizations I have been a part of at the high school from top to bottom, with Ms. Kane and Mr. Sharest as the advisors, to the leadership team, and to the students involved. DECA is a business club, and as I like to say, within track there are different categories. There's a shop poach, a 400 meter, 800 meter. There's different categories of business: finance, hospitality, management. I was in marketing, and I got involved last year. And so at DECA, you go to these competitions, and you're presented with, you know, a role play, and so you have to kind of figure out a solution to a business problem that you're presented with. And so you give your solution to a judge, and they grade you, and you're competing against, I mean, like 25, up to 200 other kids, depending on what level you're on. And I was fortunate enough to get to the international competition in Atlanta, Georgia. And so it was just a great opportunity, not only to learn public speaking skills and to learn about business, which has helped drive my interest and want to maybe major or minor in business as I move on to college, but it also connected me with so many students across the state and across the country, and within other countries. I remember at the international competition within Atlanta, I met a girl from Puerto Rico, and sadly, she had actually lost her house to a hurricane. And it was so sad to see, but it was so great to talk to her and just get her perspective on, you know, the United States, and what she thinks about things like school, and what food she eats. And so it's just a great way to meet other kids, have fun, and try something new, and explore your passion, and help find your passion, and my passion in this case, is business.
That's wonderful.
It's a great experience, and I'm very thankful that you guys approved for us to do another year of DECA.
Well, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane, much appreciated.
No, thank you for remembering, too.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we did, we had talked about it and that, so, and, you know, I forgot to email Shane to tell him that I was going to put him on the spot tonight, so. It's, you know, and again, there's, with all seriousness, there's the DECA training, because they get like 20 minutes to prepare there, and then, you know, they're sitting down in front of judges, and there's questions that the judges are asking them, that they've got to come up with the answers, you know, that type of deal. So it's very good.
I'm going to ask one more question.
Sure, go right ahead.
Usually, we don't have any, right? But I'm just curious, from a student perspective, how you feel the one-to-one initiative is going? I know we've been around the school, seeing students using their devices. I know, you know, teachers are learning more and more skills in how to implement and integrate technology, but from your perspective, what do you say?
Yeah, I actually love my laptop, I have to say. I'm constantly using it in school, whether the teachers are trying to get it involved in the classroom. I know in English classes, we've used it to read articles, write some essays within class, but also it's great just to have that resource available to you, especially when you're in the class. You say you have five minutes left, and you want to get something done, I can email. I know Mr. Nunes had emailed me during the day, and I was able to respond to his email. And it's just great to have that resource available to you. I know I've used, I'm constantly using it every single day, within school and at home. And I've told my parents and everyone I know that I really like it, and I'm very appreciative that we rolled out that one-to-one initiative. Not a lot of, not every school has that. And so we're very fortunate enough to be able to say that we all have laptops and are able to access the internet, and it's just something to be collaborative. And so we're very thankful and happy that.
Good, good, thanks, Shane.
No, no problem. Anybody else? Very good. Thank you, Shane, much appreciated. I don't know if you've got homework, you're more than welcome to stay. Okay. Okay, next is something kind of near and dear to my heart, but also well-deserved again, and that's the recognition of the Dartmouth High School marching band for the year they had. Mr. Kingsland, Val, Mitch, Luke?
So along with myself tonight, the three drum majors, the student conductors of the band are here, and I know you'd probably rather hear from them, so I want to have them introduce themselves, and then I have a couple little things I'd like to say.
Hello, I'm Valerie Painton. I'm a senior, and I'm the head drum major of the marching band.
Hi, I'm Mitchell Moran. I'm a sophomore.
Hi, I'm Luke Higgins. I'm a junior.
That was quick. When the band goes out and competes at that level, I hope everyone in the greater community feels like it's a win for the whole school department. And a lot of people have put a lot into it. I mean, the creative staff with the band, Mr. Unx, Mr. Rayner, Mr. Martin, who's out there shuffling the parking lot for us. I mean, a lot of people had a lot to do with making it happen. When you looked at the sheets, I like to try to be as analytical about stuff as I can. It's the music scores that put us over the top, and that's been that case with all three of these last three seasons. So as a music teacher, I feel good about that. And all of the other, you know, the boxes were also really strong. The other thing that's been a big deal for us in the last few years is, if you follow the Color Guide scene with us at all, you know they've gone up a bracket, they've gone to an open class guard, and that makes a big difference. All the training wheels are off, and it's just open class competition. So their portion of that sheet has gone way up, and having Mr. Catturley at the high school who teaches special ed be in school where he can see the kids and keep that going, and now a Color Guide class, thank you, Ross, I appreciate that, makes a big difference. So I don't like to say too much, because as close as those things always are, it goes your way, it's all good. It doesn't go your way, you just take a look at the sheet and see what happened. And having a school committee person that rides whatever bus with me to wherever we're going makes a big difference, Mr. Nunes, and I always appreciate that. But really happy with the way the sheets turned out with all the music stuff, and lots of people have lots to do with. I keep telling everyone, if it was just me, we'd do something worthwhile, but it would be a lot different. It is a lot of help, so. Thank you to everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill. You want to talk a little bit about the season and your role?
Yeah, sure. Well, this is my last season, so I think, for me, this is the more, this is the most I've wanted the win, you know, more than any of my other years. You know, it kind of ended off on a high note, which it did. But I actually joined this program as a flute player, and two years ago, well, three years ago now, BK came up to me and asked me if I wanted to be the drum major, and I immediately was like, yes, yes, I would like to do that. And it's one of the most gratifying experiences that I could ever endure in anything that you could do in high school. I mean, the responsibility and the, I don't know what to say, but all of it, just being able to stand up on a podium and look out and see such a strong group working together as like one unit, and being able to produce the sound that we do and to look the way we do, it doesn't get any better than that. I'm very, very, very glad to be part of a program such as this, and I couldn't imagine my high school experience turning out any other way. So I'm just grateful for everyone who's given me the opportunities to do what I do, and I'm grateful to people like Luke and Mitchell for putting up with me for three months, on and on and on again. And I'm just, I'm just truly grateful for everything that this program has taught me, not even musically wise, but going on into my life, you know, skills about leadership and cooperation. I think those are truly important, and I don't think I would be able to experience putting those, you know, qualities into play if I weren't in a program like, you know, the one we have. So it's really great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think Val summed it up pretty well, and like, it's a great program to be in. It's a lot of fun, and I just want to say I'm really proud of this year's group, because we lost a lot of strong players from last year, and this group worked extremely hard, and it showed up. Like, the first couple competitions, you could really see that we were working hard. After every competition, there'd be a couple things you'd need to work on, and we'd get it done immediately. Like, it was just a perfect group to have. And I still have two more seasons, so I'm hoping the next two will be just like this group, and I'm pretty sure it will be. But I'm just super proud of how we did this year.
So this was an excellent season, and just kind of reinforced how strong, like, I feel about this program. I'm a violinist originally, so I had, I kind of had to jump into this when I first started two years ago now, and I love it so much. Like, now I'm even in indoor percussion. It's just such an excellent program to be in. I can't, can't get enough of it. And this year, we had a really technically demanding show, both marching and playing aspects. So we kind of went through a little bit of a tough spot in the early season, but obviously, we're, like, through the staff and the band members, we were able to get through that, and obviously, it paid off at the end of the season. So, yeah, we have an excellent program, and no matter who the kids are, who the staff is, we're able to get through it, and we do well most of the time, so, yeah, I'm proud to be in it.
Thanks. Questions?
Before we get away altogether, one of our first trumpets out in the audience, Alex Baratino, one of the seniors, so he's a big part of this, too.
Questions?
Sure, I'll start. Just a big congratulations for the third year in a row to Mr. Kingsland and the rest of the marching band, and everyone else, the support staff that makes that up. You both should be very proud of yourselves, the accomplishments that you have made. Thrilled to see this, you know, at this level, in Dartmouth, at Dartmouth High School. It's huge. So I know there's a, I know there's a lot of time and effort and practice, and more time, and more practice that goes into it, but the end result, it shows. So congratulations to all of you.
I say the same thing, congratulations. When I first came to Dartmouth, Dartmouth was noted for its music program, and then when Mr. Madrigal left, Mr. Kingsland took over, and if I may say, they didn't miss a beat. You have to be very proud of the work your teachers do and your students. It's the consistency. I know sometimes I'll go to a meeting at the high school, and I'll come out around nine o'clock, and you're still out there practicing. You're a credit to your families and to our school system, and thank you so much, because I know a lot goes into what you do, and we're all very much appreciative. Thank you.
Yeah, I also want to say congratulations, and it's really great for me, not originally being from this community, to see how music and the arts are really integrated into our curriculum, which helps strengthen the band, because you're doing it during the day and after. And it's such an important part of students' education. I think sometimes people think of it as just an extracurricular, but it's a lot more than that. And so I think it's great that the community has been able to do that and to support that, which helps produce, I think, the great results that you guys have. And, you know, my family knows all about how great you guys are. They were super disappointed. They were in town for Thanksgiving. It was too cold for you guys to go out and play, because they really wanted to see you play, but I told them, I told them next season, they'll be, they will be just as good next season, so we're looking forward to it.
I don't know what else I can add to that, but congratulations, and, yeah, you are a credit to the school, and it's amazing to see the teamwork, the collaboration, and how it all ends up, your drive and determination and your hard work. So congratulations, I'm very proud of you.
You guys hear me all the time type of deal and that, but one of the things, I know you guys were warming up down at MetLife, and there was a group six band that was watching you warm up. And I was talking with the director, and his comment was, well, when you guys are going to be on, we'd like to see you, but we're going to, it's our warm-up time. So he had his students watching between the drum line and you guys in the pit and everything else, and was just, they were just in total awe. So, you know, and your speech on the bus as we pulled into MetLife was one for the ages, job well done. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, next, Dr. Gifford, Spotlight?
Let's see, where we are. Spotlight on Kids, okay. So continue with some information about the high school, as we have Principal Tebow here tonight to tell us what's been happening with our kids at the high school.
So just wanted to thank the committee and thank Dr. Gifford for having this segment of the school committee, the Spotlight on Kids. I think it's really, you know, sometimes in education, the spotlight goes to everywhere but the kids, and that's really why we're all here. And so I really enjoy this particular segment in each of the school committee meetings. It is a bit challenging at the high school level to choose a particular program to spotlight, because as we just saw with a band, back-to-back-to-back national champions. We had two athletic teams that won conference championships this year, our field hockey team and our boys soccer team. We have award-winning journalism program, award-winning arts program. So really, it's quite tough to select who to spotlight each year. And I think last year, I went earlier in the year, I think it might have been October, it was my first or second month at Dartmouth High School. And so last year, I decided to pick the TV media production program, just because I know that they're a program that, not only do they do their own great work, but they highlight the great work of all the other programs. And so I decided this year, very purposefully, to do the same, to spotlight them as well, because as great as our band is, as great as all of the other programs we have at Dartmouth High School are, it's this program, the DHS TV media production program, that really makes their work highlighting all of their fellow students at the high school. And they really do, from our unified sports to our athletics, to the school committee meetings, they do a fantastic job. So I'm going to actually not speak very much. I'm going to just show, they just got done, total collaboration between a couple of Mr. Prati's intro-level TV classes, and then edited and all put together by a separate class, an advanced class. But it's a promotional film that we're going to use tomorrow, at tomorrow night's showcase evening, and it really does exactly what I just said. It captures all of the great work that goes on at Dartmouth High School on a daily basis. So we'll show that video, and then some of the students who are here actually contribute to this, we'll recognize them after the video is over. Thank you, Mr. Galashow.
I've taken biology, chemistry, anatomy and physiology, marine biology, and AP biology. And my favorite class is definitely AP biology, because of all the hands-on and labs, it definitely makes the class a lot more interesting.
freshman year, I took Algebra I. It was my first block class. I missed cost of, I took the honors course, so it was a little bit harder, but I kind of liked the challenge. Sophomore year, I took geometry with Mississippio. That was a lot of fun, because myself, I'm kind of a spatial visual type of learner person, so I think that kind of math really suited me, and I really enjoyed kind of understanding how we can model and understand our physical environment.
I'm really involved in the English department here. I've taken both of our English APs, AP Comp and AP Lit. I'm also the editor of our student newspaper, The Spectrum. In the English department, you know, I've learned how to write and think about literature, which is really important skills with like communication, and which are integral to what, no matter what career you go into.
My name is Zach Walton. I'm currently in world's history with Mr. Hellcamp, and we are learning about the Enlightenment, the people involved, and how they changed the government as a whole.
I like learning about the US from about the 1920s to the 1960s. I feel like it was a very interesting period of time, and a lot of interesting things happened, like the Second World War, the Great Depression. They're incorporating the Chromebooks well into work.
Out of the languages available here at Dartmouth High, I take Portuguese and Spanish. I look forward to my classes. The teachers are nice, and it's fun to learn.
I feel like Dartmouth High School has a very advanced science programs. I'm currently in AP Bio. In AP Bio, Dr. Bangs has brought us to use the Z-Space computers, and in there, we took apart a heart, and you can see everything inside of it.
Our Z-Space computers allow students to get a three-dimensional look at different cells and help identify like different parts of the cell. Our anatomage table allows us to virtually dissect a human body.
The reason why I enjoy math is because when you learn one thing, you're also learning another thing, or something that'll help you down the road. So say if you learn one type of equation, that could benefit for helping to solve a graph later down the line within another lesson.
This class is so different from every other class I've taken, because Mr. Hellcamp, he is so dedicated towards his job. He'll go like one-on-one with students if they're like having trouble, and make sure like everyone's on the same page with like the certain topic. And, yeah, it's just an enjoyable environment and class to be in.
All right, so I'm currently in my junior year, and right now I'm taking, it's like an accelerated combination class kind of thing. It's a combination of Algebra II and pre-calculus. And Mr. Tebow, or someone in administration, came up with this idea to try to kind of get students to get to be able to take stats like statistics or calculus during their senior year. And I think this kind of reflects the rigorous STEM material that Dartmouth High offers.
I've also learned about writing effectively and concretely and good stuff. So The Spectrum is an online newspaper that publishes articles every week or so about things that are happening in the school, whether they be controversies or highlighting interesting things that people are doing, and we represent students' voices to the school and community.
My name's Ethan Maniz. I'm a junior here at Dartmouth High School, and I take Portuguese III with Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee does do a lot of group work. That helps me out a lot, because it keeps us interacting with people in Portuguese. It makes it really interactive, not really boring. It's a fun class to take. Even though it's a language, it's kind of like another academic. It doesn't make it seem like that.
I took this class solely because I needed stuff for college, because I'm trying to be an architectural, like engineering major. And I think what I wanted from this class was this hands-on stuff, like stuff that would get me like in the field. And I think it was perfectly like how I wanted, like we're building rockets, we're always doing stuff, like there's never a day of break. Like, we only, we play ping pong sometimes, but I think it's a really good class for me personally, because I'll get a lot of it, what I need.
Well, here at Dartmouth High School, I think we have a very diverse phys ed program. It's not just like the typical schools where you only have gym class. You also are able to take dance, weight training, fitness. We have zumba classes, yoga classes.
In the school, I'm part of the concert band and the guitar lab class, but outside of school, I'm part of the marching band. I'm the head drum major, and I'm also a member of the dance team for the indoor percussion. I think that all of the individual programs that we have here at the school, like the chorus programs, the harmonics, orchestra, band, percussion, whatever it is, I think that the community sort of views all of those things as a way for students to really, one, express themselves in a healthy way, which is, you know, really good. Who doesn't want that? But on top of that, I think that it just teaches like these kids important qualities, like past musicianship, that I think the community can really appreciate.
With our new seven-block schedule, art class kind of gives us a break and all our homework, and a chance to express ourselves. And we use a lot of different mediums, like charcoal, and paint, and drawing, and sculpting, and it's a really fun class. And I really enjoyed ceramics, because it's very hands-on, and it's one of the classes where you just kind of sit down, and you really get to do your own thing and make your own kind of projects. It's not, it's a little bit guided, but there isn't much guidance. So like other classes, where you have to do a certain thing, you kind of could do, you have more freedom in that class. In art, I get to draw a lot, and you get to see things the way you would normally see them, like depth, and shadows, and shapes, and forms, and stuff like that.
For projects that I like a lot, it's, well, every project so far has been like, we've designed a ping pong paddle, we've designed two-folder rockets, a waterballer rocket, and all of them I've liked like a lot. Like, they've all been really fun in designing and all that. Mr. Martin, he's a very blunt man, and like, if my project's bad, like, he's going to tell me, he's going to tell everybody, and that just gets right to the point, and you're able to make corrections a lot easier in that way. But, yeah, he's very blunt, and I think I appreciate that, because it's just right to the point, and there's no gray area or anything. I enjoy engineering at Dartmouth High, because it is very hands-on, and it's exactly what I need for college.
I actually had the opportunity to teach a yoga class, both my junior and senior year. I was able to teach my peers, which is kind of different than what we usually do when we're just taught from our teachers. I think it was a really cool learning experience, and I I think it was a really cool learning experience, and I know that everybody that took the classes really liked it too, so I think it's just good to have a different program than like the typical only gym class.
My name's Alex Baracina, and I'm a senior here at Dartmouth High School, and I play the trumpet in the marching band. So I started in the marching band in eighth grade. It was a challenge because you're playing with all these high school kids and the schedule, well, it's every day. It's about 25 hours a week of practice. My sophomore, junior, and senior year, we won. So these are the trophies for the past three years. We've won three years in a row, so it's awesome that we put in all this hard work, and it pays off in the national championship.
My sophomore year, I took Accounting I, and Accounting I is, again, just an introductory course to accounting, just teaching you all the basics about how to journalize transactions, and just giving you the background knowledge you need to do more advanced accounting problems. This year, I'm in Accounting II, and in Accounting II, we take it a step further from Accounting I, and we do more difficult accounting problems that are more applicable to the real world.
Here in DHS, we have a number of media classes that allow you to experiment with different forms of media and recording. Let's say you wanted to produce your own show, you can do that in DHS Media. But every day, we produce a show called The Tribe. The Tribe gives news updates for any, for all students, or whatever they really need to know about for that day of the week. But you can do anything, from podcasts, to your own show, to movies. There's just so many things that you can do here and take away from it that will go beyond just the school.
My name's Owen Abaro. I'm the senior varsity captain for the boys soccer team. The facility we use is usually after-school. Every day, we'll head over to the middle school, we'll get into the boys locker room underneath the gymnasium, and we'll go out, and there's four different fields we have a choice to play on. My coach is Coach Josh Silva. He's a great guy, he knows a lot about soccer, and it's been a pleasure playing for him for the past four years.
How's it going? I'm Will Cody. I'm the senior captain of this year's Dartmouth High School hockey team. Last year, coming off a strong season, made it to the South semifinals after a little bit of a tough loss to Hopington. So coaches, our head coach, Coach Capello, he's done a great job all summer, all offseason, getting things together. The team's been working out a couple times a week in the fitness room. By the way, great facility.
Best part about the girls program here at Dartmouth High is that everyone here at the girls program takes everything serious, especially our coaches. Everyone, you know, between the athletic trainer and all the way to the athletic director, you know, really takes into consideration that the girls program here is important, and always make sure that we're always comfortable with everything that is going on.
Hi, my name is Riley LaConte. I'm a senior here at Dartmouth High School, and I'm involved in the Journalism Club, the Media Club, and the Art Club. I think it's really important to have after-school activities to make you just a really nice, well-rounded person. I know for me specifically, doing after-school clubs has helped me like find myself and find out what I wanna do when I get out of high school. There's a lot of different clubs here that cater to the needs and the likes of lots of different students here at Dartmouth High School, so I'm pretty sure there's a club out there for you. You just gotta find out.
Dartmouth High School is such a special place to be a student, a teacher, a member of our community, and it's an exciting time to be a Dartmouth Indian. We have our Innovation Lab, we have tremendous extracurricular activities. Our band has won several national championships. We have athletic teams each year that win conference championships, go on to the state tournament. So whether you're a student athlete, a student musician, whether you like to be onstage with our exceptional theater program, whatever it is that you're passionate about, there's something for you at Dartmouth High School. So we really encourage our seventh and eighth graders who are thinking about what high school they should choose to make Dartmouth High School their school of choice. And I'd just like to thank members of the DHS TV media production program who put together this video that really showcases and highlights some of the tremendous opportunities we have to offer our students here at Dartmouth High School. So I think the video, yeah, it's starting over again. I just think it highlights the quality of work that our DHS TV media production program puts out there. As I said, that was multiple classes that worked together during different periods, and then brought together with the final edits done by Jamie Pedro, who's one of the students in our advanced section. And again, some of our students who worked on this film are here. Just wanna recognize Alex Baracina Long, Riley LaConte, Sarah Ferrera, and Nicole Sylvain, who are here tonight, who are fine members of the DHS TV media program. And, I mean, just all of the different background footage, the different students, the number of students who are involved in this, and again, this is just the final edit, but Mr. Paradi and I were talking today. Each one of those segments was actually a longer segment that they had, that they cut down and kinda seamed together there to make it seem like one longer promotional video. So again, thank you so much for the job you guys do. You know, you do great work every day. We're very proud of you and thankful for you. So I don't know if you guys wanna speak to students at all.
Hello. So, working really hard on that video, like every day at school. I've seen the whole thing about five times through, and I gotta say, it gets better every single time I see it. It's a, it was, no, it was a really great experience to be able to go and meet with these people that I thought were really good representatives of the programs we picked them for. Like, I interviewed Alex, and I also interviewed Valerie and Mary Bancroft, and I thought, I thought that they were wonderful representations of the programs that I picked them for. They really are the best of the best, cream of the crop, and I just think that this video is really gonna show students that are looking to come to Dartmouth schools for their high school experience, they're gonna find exactly what they're looking for. I know that I certainly did, so I was, it was really nice to be able to be a part of that and share it with other people, so.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Alex, you're quiet for once.
Hi, I'm Alex Baracina, and I, I'm in the intro class this year, because it just didn't fit my schedule last year, but I feel like it's a great opportunity to learn how to use this editing software and all the equipment, from the cameras to the recording devices. Like personally, I have a DJ business, so I've applied a lot of what I've learned into creating promotional videos for myself. And I wanna thank, yes, and I'm starting a podcast also, next couple of weeks. So I mean, I wanna thank Mr. Paradi for teaching us what he's taught us, and obviously the support from administration, Mr. Tebow, to let us go out and film everything, from interviews to B-roll, to anything. So just wanna thank everyone. It's a great opportunity.
Anybody else? Questions for the students? Chris?
Yeah, sure.
Fabulous job, folks. That was a professionally-produced video right there, I would have to say. I'm hoping that it will become, or some form of it, will become some type of promotional video down in the South. You'll show it tomorrow night at the eighth grade, seventh and eighth grade open house night. But I know what it takes is a lot of behind-the-scenes work there, a lot of going out, a lot of getting footage, planning who you're gonna talk to, so there's a lot of time that went into that, and the final outcome was very well done. So thank you, thank you very much for taking this time, you know, to put this together and debut it here for us.
It was fabulous. Thank you. I learned a lot about the high school just watching that. I almost wanna go back, but you've got a lot of things going on there. You're never too old to learn. A fantastic job. I mean, it doesn't look like, and I know at least one of your students up there is a freshman, so we've already got her going on that, and you guys have done a wonderful job. And thank you, and thank you, Mr. Paradi, for all the work you've done. You've brought a fresh energy to that whole department that wasn't there before, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
I just wanna say, when you see all those names on the credits, it was truly all, it was a huge collaboration to bring that video together because all the individual groups of students had to edit each segment separately than those segments. And we couldn't have, it wasn't, it wouldn't have been possible without like the new computers that we recently got, the new iMacs and iPad cameras. Believe it or not, that was all shot with iPads, believe it or not. And using the new technology like AirDrop, and literally the collaboration with the new equipment and piecing it together, it literally was three classes where students were producing the segments, then handing those segments off to the advanced class, which my student, Jamie Pedro, couldn't make it tonight. But Jamie, a lot of credit to Jamie as well, for literally piecing all that together into one promo video, and that was a tremendous amount of work. But we couldn't, it wouldn't have been possible if we didn't have the technology. So again, thank you for all the support in supporting us to bring something of this nature to everyone.
Thank you.
So I loved it, not just because my son was in it, but I thought it was really well done, but, but as an educator too, I like to see kids doing things that have sort of real-world application, because it's, it's when you make those connections between what you're doing in the classroom and seeing this result that are, all these other students are gonna see, that I think students really get that deep sort of learning. And so it's just, not only is it well-done, I'm really excited for the kids to have the opportunity to do these sorts of real-world learning activities. It's really great for them, so thank you.
Yeah, I, this is wonderful to see, like the, all the work and the, just the incredible eye and talent and that you all put into this. It's exciting. I love watching everything that you create. I follow you on Twitter, so. And just so much talent, and it just engages the community in such a wonderful way. I can't wait for folks to see this tomorrow night at your showcase.
It'd be nice, it'll be good. Yeah, congratulations. Yeah, and, you know, again, I think it talks about the type of students that we have at Dartmouth High School, and you know, from, you know, from the administration on down to the teachers, to display it to the students. The question I have is, you know, how many takes did it take with these, I mean, did you kinda get it done in one fell swoop per se, or?
Well, in terms of the interviews that I did, like, I remember specifically, like, I was going and saying, you know, just, it's like a normal conversation with me, like, don't like worry about the camera, but then sometimes they'd be like, hi, I'm so, start it again, start it again, I can't do it, I can't do it. They want me to start it again, but like, after a while, it just became so natural, because like, if you're really passionate about something and you really, you know, work hard at a certain thing, then it just becomes natural talking about it. Like, it's just, you don't really speak from a script, you just, you speak from the heart. And that's really what happened as it, time went on, and it became like, you know, just don't worry about messing up, just talk to me.
Yeah. Thank you. There we go.
So I was also interviewing, and the best part was, we'd interview kids for maybe 10 minutes, and I did all the math and business department, and we got back down to the lab. I went to go edit everything. I forgot to turn on the microphone. So I had, I had good video, but there was no sound. I had to go back and redo it, but.
There you go.
The acting makes perfect.
The learning experts, yeah. Very good. Very good. All right, great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hank.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay.
He's still up there.
Yeah. Yeah. Don't get comfortable, Mr. Tebow.
Come on back up.
You're next on the agenda too. Appendixes to the student handbook.
Tough act to follow. That last one was great. If Mr. Gallishaw had said that joke, everyone would be laughing. Okay, so the changes, so as you'll recall, the district shifted to a district-wide student handbook with appendixes for the three levels, and obviously, the high school just has the most, the most areas that are specific to the high school, just by nature of the high school setting. What I shared was a highlighted document that has the changes in it. I wouldn't consider any of them to be really substantive changes. Most of them are cleaning up things from block to period, because we've shifted from four, you know, four blocks to seven periods. Just some wordsmithing changes really, but nothing this year of any major change, so I don't, I don't feel like I need to go through every change unless you want me to. I'd rather just answer questions that folks have, if that's all right with everyone.
I just wanna say it was really useful to have all the changes highlighted in a separate document, so I very much appreciate it. That's made everything really clear to see what changes were made and why, and because of that, I don't wanna think that, feel like we didn't, but because it was made so clear, I think you did a good job of explaining the changes, and I don't really have any questions about any of them. But I really appreciated that, pulling that out for us.
So that almost didn't happen because technology is great until it isn't, and so I did all this prior to, prior to Thanksgiving break, and when I went to open it, it was not saved. Yeah, so. I'm glad it was helpful.
Kathy?
I don't have any questions either.
I just have one question. When you talk about the Positive Behavior Intervention Program, the PBIS program, how is that being integrated into the high school?
So periodically, they have assembly, school-wide assemblies for students who have been recognized for one particular thing or another sometimes. Last year, a major area was on, a push was on tardiness. Tardiness had been an issue, so we were looking to reward students who were showing up to school on time every day. It's run, PBIS is headed up by Dr. Fortin, our school psychologist, and a team of folks, and this year, we're actually looking to see how we might reinvent that for next year. They're taking this year to look at it. I think it's one of those, it's a little bit more challenging at the high school level because you wanna find rewards and incentives that the students find compelling, whereas at the elementary school level, you can, you know, give, there's a lot more that kids find exciting, you know? So we're doing that work this year. PBIS still is in place, but it's kinda, this year is a working year to kinda reimagine what it could look like at the high school level.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Chris? Also? One question I had, and in a couple of places, and I did talk with you about this too, is, you know, it says, you know, exceptions can be made only by the principal, and I'm just, you know, if you're not there, it becomes your design. Does that need to be in there, or do you wanna change, you know?
So I can certainly, we, you know, we can certainly change it anywhere where it says "principal" to "administration," and I think that covers it. I think if people do a literal reading of it, it does say "principal" in a lot of places. It's one of those things where very seldom are any decisions made by me in isolation, especially as it relates to students and student discipline and those types of things, particularly because the setup we have at the high school level, the assistant principals are the folks who work most closely with students around student discipline. It's not until there's an appeal that I usually get involved in student discipline. So in any case, wherever it says "principal," like make an exception for tardiness or things like that, that's done in consultation with the assistant principals already, because they know.
They know.
The intimate details behind those situations. So, you know, if folks would prefer that, where it says "principal," it says "administration," I'm fine with that. You can certainly.
Yeah, I'm good with, yeah. Personally, I'd like to see, see that. It just makes it generic type of deal, and takes the onus. You know, again, somebody doesn't start reading this literally type of deal, so. Okay. All right. Do we need a, any other questions? Comment? Mr. Tebow, anything else on this? No?
Do we need to, do we need a motion to approve that?
Do we need to approve this? Okay.
I will make a motion to approve it with the stipulation that we're gonna make the amendments that Mr. Neuns just described, replacing principal with administration for the, in those places where it's relevant.
Motion, motion by Dr. Jenkins, second by Mr. Oliver. On the motion, any discussion?
Motion, motion by Dr. Jenkins, second by Mr. Oliver. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Very good job.
Thank you.
She managed to get her yes vote in even though.
Yeah, I know she did.
Even out, so.
You okay?
All right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, good. All right. Next items on the agenda, we've got a, we've got a couple of consent agenda items. If I can give it, you want to do those?
Well, you see the one that they're requesting at the high school to conduct the cultural tour of Eastern Europe and that's pretty awesome.
I'm, I'm reading that and I've been to several of those places over the past few years and, and I'm like, I'll go back. So.
Note, that is next year and.
Twenty twenty.
We didn't realize it at first and then, but we said, well, that's good planning. They have plenty of time because if they do any fundraisers, et cetera. So we'll look for that. And I believe we are, under the other matters, we'll be looking at the New York.
I was going to put them both in. I was going to put them both in with the consent with the other one.
So those are the two we have.
The other one, the other one we have is the Unified Arts to New York City on, in March, their, their annual trip there, type of deal. So I don't know if you want to take them individually, you want to take them both together. Choice is yours. Any questions on them?
I don't have a.
Okay. I don't either. All right. So can we get a motion to approve these two and we'll be good to go?
Make that motion.
All right. So we have a motion by Dr. Carol, Dr. Carol Fotis to approve both excurs one to Eastern Europe in April vacation 2020 and the other one to New York City in March for the art department, Unified Arts Department.
Second that.
And second by Ms. Amaral on the motion. Any questions?
I just, they, New York's always a great trip and I mean that, the other trip just seems so amazing.
The other one is, I'm looking at the other one and I'm going, wait, I can go back.
Yeah, that's great.
That's great. All righty. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Who's back? Which one? Europe or?
So could I, I, I know we already voted to approve it, but is it, so will students, it will be just sort of announced generally to students to?
Yeah, please. I didn't realize she was.
I didn't see you back there either.
I think she was hoping we didn't know. I'm just wondering because I, I have two kids I might want to send away in April vacation. What would, what would have to do if they wanted to send their children away for April break?
Yeah. So now that I have your approval, I'm going to start recruiting over the next two weeks. Thank you. I've worked with EF four times before. I taught in Westport for 13 years. I ran four trips abroad at Westport. And actually, Westport's joining us on this trip. So it's going to be actually, and there's another teacher from New Bedford. It's going to be like a South Coast collaborative tour. So hopefully there'll be students from Stang, Dartmouth, Westport, New Bedford. So it'll be like a big group. So if we can fill two buses, that would be awesome. Yeah. So I think my fir, my kickoff, my recruitment meeting will probably be the second week of December because there's an early enrollment discount for students that, that get in before the end of the year. They save $200 or something like that. I also have $500 in scholarship money to, to give away. I can give $500 scholarships or a single $500 scholarship if, if there's a student in need. And the earlier we get kids enrolled, the easier it is to make those payments. Yeah.
That's great. Thank you.
Yep.
Fantastic. Yeah, great.
Actually, we'd have to be taking that history course though, right?
Well, I'm a, I'm a biology teacher. So I, in my opinion, like international travel, there's nothing like it in the world. I mean, it's changed who I am as a person and I just want to share that with, with kids because it really can change the trajectory of their life. So the more of the world they experience, especially when they're dealing with pieces of their history book that seem so remote and are becoming forgotten in a lot of contexts. But to, to go there and see it and to see Auschwitz and realize the horror that happened there.
No, I agree that it's an amazing trip.
Yeah.
I was just making the assumption that it was.
It's, it's open to, it'll be open to current, current freshmen, sophomores and juniors. So my hope is to do a trip like this every other year. And so incoming freshmen will have to wait for the next trip. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. That's great.
Okay. All right. Okay. Next item on the agenda, my turn, is the superintendent's evaluation process and timeline. All right. Who is Mr. Galishaw? Because I'm going to need.
He's in the hallway talking.
Oh.
It's on there, I did see.
No, I know it. I know it's on here. I know it's on there. However, how am I going to find it? Notice I pigeonholed him as soon as I came in. Yeah.
It's this.
I appreciate that. Okay. Well, in that case, I'll go back and sit over here.
Sending you back. Sit down, Mr. Nunes.
I don't have to, I don't have to futz with that. Everybody knows my computer skills. Okay. First and foremost, my thanks to the committee and to Dr. Gifford for your indulgence. Might mess up the last meeting. So we did finally, I did finally find everything. And my, also deepest thanks to my assistant, my vice chair for her computer experience and putting all of this together. You know, I wrote it out and she did the computer. So what we have here in all seriousness is our end of cycle substantive evaluation report for our superintendent for the previous school year. There are a number of items under instructional leadership, you know, curriculum, instruction, assessment, evaluation, and data informed decision-making and some subcategories under there. And all the committee members marked Dr. Gifford as proficient in that, that ranking. That's standard. The next standard, which is superintendent's performance rating for standards two, which is management and operations and its environment and human resource management and development, scheduling and management information systems, law, ethics and policies, and also fiscal systems. All the committee members marked Dr. Gifford as proficient. In standard number three, which is family and communities, taking into consideration engagement, sharing responsibilities, communication and family concerns. Four of the committee members had proficient and one had exemplary type of deal. So. And for the super, standards number four, which was professional culture, which takes into commitment to high standards, cultural proficiency, communication, continuous learning, shared vision and managing conflict. All the committee members, again, marked Dr. Gifford as proficient. In the assessed progress made toward achieving goals, professional practice, one through the school year will support professional development efforts that will lead to the expansion of STEM and CS pathways across the district to improve student access to rigorous and relevant content as measured by an increase in a number of opportunities for students to engage in STEM-rich, project-based learning opportunities K to 12, as well as progress made relative to pathway development. The committee had four met expectations and one exceeds expectations. And in the second goal under student learning, it says, as a team, we will continue to collaborate with high school math educators to improve student learning and mathematics as measured by a variety of assessments, such as an increase in student growth percentile to the typical range forty, common assessment data or an increase in the number of students who achieve a passing grade in Algebra I on their first attempt. And the committee had two with significant progress in this goal and three that met And for overall assessment for Dr. Gifford, there are four categories. I should have mentioned this earlier and I apologize. There are four indicators. There is unsatisfactory, needs improvement slash developing, proficient and exemplary, exemplary. And overall assessment is proficient for Dr. Gifford. And some comments that were made, and again, we didn't, we have all your comments and thank you very much. We just kind of picked a couple of them to put in here and that. And just regarding the marking of exemplary in the area of family and community engagement, notation was made in regards to a concerted effort by Dr. Gifford to be present at many events. Due to the nature of being unable to be everywhere, comment was made that Dartmouth Public School has been making an effort to have staff at participating events, take photos to be sure the community sees pictures of what's happening in many areas. There was also notation of the STEM work across the district, as well as the DHS Innovation Lab. And lastly, note was made in particular to note that initiative set forth for moving the math scores and having vertical and horizontal alignments. That's what we have. Dr. Gifford?
I'm good. Thank you. We spoke and.
Yeah, we did.
You shared all of this with me. Can I just make a comment just for viewers at home, right? Because they might see those ratings and think, well, why isn't, right, why isn't she exemplary on everything? And I just want to state that when we did the training with, was it the MASC?
Yeah, MASC, yeah.
It's clear that proficient is where, it's a high performance level. It's not like you're just meeting the bar. It's, you're doing a really good job. And so I want to just communicate that to viewers because they might not get that from seeing.
Right.
That they're not up there. And like exemplary is like, you're the best in the entire state at ever doing this, right? And they're very clear to us that you should very, very sort of rarely pick that.
Yeah.
And you should offer extensive proof. So I just wanted to make that clear to everyone out there who might not be aware of that.
Yeah. And it, in the way the evaluation summary is set up, if you rate someone as exemplary, then you have got to make some huge documentation.
Exactly. And so, but that's not clear when you just see those words.
No, you're absolutely right. Right, yeah.
It's a complex system for sure.
Yes. And as we had to get trained on it in order to figure out how to use it. Or can't we just had to figure it out on ourself?
Yeah. She's learned quickly though. Dr. Carol Fotis?
I'm so glad Dr. Jenkins mentioned that. And I'd also just like to say, I thank you and your team are doing a tremendous job.
Thank you.
You're making a difference and I guess that's what it's all about. So thank you.
We think so. We hope so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I add one other comment too?
Sure.
I want to say that I think, you know, I've been involved in Dartmouth politics a lot and we've not often had lots of money. I know Mr. Nunes knows that being around here. And so I really appreciate your leadership team thinking creatively about finances. You know, I know school choice was a controversial thing to do, but we're doing lots of great stuff.
Lots.
With that money. And I think that's been a real leap forward. Looking at creative sort of grant funding has secured a lot of really innovative equipment for the high school. And that's really needed here if we're going to move forward. And I think that I, I highlighted that in my comments and I'm really appreciative of that because it's good to see these new and exciting things happening. Cause it's so often we have to say, no, we don't have the money for it. So it's nice to be able to say yes occasionally.
Yeah.
It is, it is.
You're right. I mean, there are a lot of times when I'm in the schools or whatever it might be, and some of the teachers might ask, suggest something that they could use in their classrooms. And usually it's some kind of device. So I always call Jonathan and say, why can't we buy that for them? But we do have an easier time saying yes because of the funds that we've been able to secure in, you know, various areas, such as, like you said, school choice. So it is nice to be able to say, we can do that. We can do this. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Chris?
I'll just add, if you don't mind.
You may.
Mr. Chair.
You may.
I would concur and agree with my colleague, Dr. Gifford, that I think under your direction, I do personally see the district moving forward. I see us at a completely different spot today as where we were probably year one when we first came in. I think it is a significant amount of progress as we're moving these, moving these, going on four years now?
Four years.
Four years.
It's hard to believe.
Just with the physical plants of the schools of trying to, you know, we're looking at, we've already replaced DeMello, Potter, Middle School Room, with your team, with Mr. Kylie. We're looking at a lot of collaboration and cooperation with other town departments. We're getting in the turret field.
Yes.
And lights.
Yes.
I'm pleased to be, have been on the first school committee that approved school choice. I think it was physically, physically a smart, responsible thing to do. And it seems to, today anyway.
Going well.
And I think you look at the $500,000 workforce grant that's been brought in and what we've been able to do with that. Establishing, very thankful and thrilled that we're able to get a preschool program over in Rotherham at Potter School. That seems to be going well. So there is definitely a lot of, has been a lot of changes and a lot of, for the good, and a lot of development that's coming down the pipe. And it's all under your guidance. So.
Good. I appreciate that.
Great job to you and, and your team especially.
Absolutely. Yeah, we were, we're pretty excited about what's going on. When we look at these things, as we present evidence to you.
Yeah.
We say, wow.
Yeah.
That's a lot of stuff, really good stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
It's, I'm proud to live in Dartmouth and be part of this committee and have my daughter in Dartmouth Middle School.
Thank you.
Kathy?
No, I just concur. I mean, it's, you know, the evidence is just so rich. I mean, the things that are going on around it and, and the focus just about all the kids. It's really evident and getting those kids engaged and the, you know, teachers excited and just the whole culture is just kind of, it's moving forward in such a positive way. I'm very proud to be a part of, part of.
Great. Thank you.
Viewing it, you know?
Yeah. Thank you.
And in my children, I should say too.
That's right, of course.
As a parent. It's just that, you know, it's wonderful. Yeah.
Job, job well done and with everything that's going on.
Yes. I appreciate the committee's support, of course, as I said oftentimes and I'll be at conferences, et cetera. It's not always like that to have such a supportive committee that really knows how to support the schools and how to set the direction. So they certainly appreciate that as well. We couldn't, it's, it's a governing team and it, you really have to have it that way. And you can see as the video tonight, all the good work that's going on just throughout the whole district. So we appreciate that.
I think it's, and you see the, you see, you'll go back to that video for a second. You see, you just hear the excitement that the students have with the classes they're taking and why they're taking them and, you know, what they're doing and, you know, the teacher, you know, making it interesting and exciting and one-on-one type of deal. I think it's fantastic. And again, that's, that's at the top and works through. So, which is nice.
Very good.
All right. So that being said, anything else? Okay. I do need a motion to, from the committee to authorize me to, number one, to approve this and have me sign this.
So moved.
So moved by Dr. Jenkins, second by Dr. Carol Fotis. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Oh, next on, gee, I get back, Mr. Tebow, you're not the only one with back-to-back. I've got back-to-back too. Yeah, I know. Created in effort vocational technical school committee selection process update. It appears as though the, and I caught this on the replay. I didn't, you know, know anything about it, but I caught it on the replay over the weekend. The Board of Selectmen last Monday night voted to put Dr. Marlin type into, as a member of the Vocational School Committee, one of the Dartmouth representatives. So I mean, we had voted, you know, Mr. McDonald knew that we had voted for, for Dr. Dr. Marlin. So then they voted for her. I have no idea who, if. and they voted for her. I have no idea who, if the town moderator had a different choice or something, but it, per se, I wasn't at the meeting, so it kind of ended up being a, you know, would have been a two-to-one vote anyway. So, Dr. Marlin is there, and she's already sworn in, and attending her first meeting tonight. So, I did, you know, kind of, kind of say to her that, you know, after the first of the year, we'd like to get her and Mr. Shea and, you know, the vote people in type of deal. And she was very much in tune with that. So.
Could be much better.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's it, you know. And again, maybe, you know, somewhere down the line, they can set up some, again, like I said before, they can go back and set up a tour for us to go through, especially with the addition that they put on. Because I haven't been through there since they did the big renovation project a few years ago.
I had the opportunity to have a conversation with Superintendent O'Brien at the MAS, MASC.
Oh, okay, good.
And I told him that the Dartmouth School community was very interested in, you know, taking the tour, and, you know, I'd like to hear what he has to say about options in education. And so he said, we are always invited, and just give him some dates, and he'd be more than welcome to have a sound.
Yeah. And again, maybe what we can do is we can look at something, you know, after the, after the holidays.
I would also like for them to come to us.
Oh, no, no, I want them here, too.
I would want to be either or. I would like for it to be both, yeah.
Oh, yeah. No, 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 I want them here, too. Yes, there is no doubt about that. Yeah.
Excellent.
There's no doubt. Okay. So, any questions on that? So, we now have.
I'm just happy that we have.
Yeah, finally. That's out of my control. Okay. Under new business, superintendent's update. Dr. Gifford?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. You may have noticed, we put out on our website, and I believe on the Facebook page, that DCTV has done a little conglomeration, if you will. So we are working with them. We're choosing the first Tuesday of each month. They're just doing the rounds at each school, and they did come to central office and putting everybody's clips together, so folks can either just highlight something that's going on for the month in the schools, or even showcase something in a classroom, et cetera. So Mike at DCTV has done his first one. I thought it came out really nice. So, again, it's just another way for folks to see the different things happening in the schools. Very informal. I've just started. I had my first superintendent chat this morning at Quinn, so as I did last year. I've been doing that a couple of times for the year. I just book an hour in a school, and folks can come on in randomly, chat, or bring up a point, something they're looking at, to some suggestion or whatever. So, this morning, I started that at Quinn. Quinn, speaking of Quinn, will have their Museum of Kindness this week, Thursday night, Thursday night, and that's always a fun time, a great turnout there. As you heard tell, the middle, middle school, well, eighth grade students will have the showcase at the high school tomorrow night. And on Wednesday night, a lot of things this week, the middle school is hosting a one-to-one initiative informational session for parents, because this week, the student, the eighth grade, will also be receiving their Chromebooks. So they just wanted to be able to explain to parents why we're doing this, and also any, you know, the care and responsibility, et cetera. So that's this week as well. Over the weekend, unfortunately, well, I was away for the weekend in Delaware, but there was a nice, Judy Cronin had invited us to an art exhibit at the Cultural Center. So, I wasn't able to attend, as I said, but she said it went very well. They're planning on doing some more shows there now that that center is going, but she wanted to also thank Rick Ferrera, who she said, single-handedly helped them, like, kind of on short notice, put up, what do you call those things, like, petitions, or, you know, things like, yeah, easels and things like that. So that went over well. And I think that was it for, for B tonight.
Very good. Any questions?
Sounds like a busy week.
Busy couple of weeks, yeah.
That's great.
Believe it or not, not the, I have nothing to report on, believe it or not. I was going to talk, I was going to make mention of the musical coming up at the high school, but Shane talked about that, which is absolutely fine. We had the band here, so that was wonderful. So, that's that. Anybody have anything else? Chris?
I would just like to add to the committee members, I call them committee members, if you'd be willing to entertain it. I'd like to ask the Dr. Gifford and her leadership team if possibly over the next couple of months, if they can present on their, I don't know, I don't know if the full committee is aware of it, but I think we're aware of it. We were invited, that Dartmouth Public Schools was invited to the Innovation and Transformation Leadership Network by Dr. Bill Daggett. It's a professional development opportunity in which they traveled to a few locations throughout the country with their leadership team. And I'd love to hear, it's a professional development opportunity.
Yeah.
With teacher, teacher liaisons, I guess, trying to get it back into the classrooms.
Right.
It's a big deal.
Yeah.
And I'd really like to hear.
That'll be great.
What they, what they think they're going to get out of it, or what they expect to get out of it, or what you're already getting out of it, and how that can relate to Dartmouth.
Yeah.
We'll be doing that, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be fine. I'm all ears. I know.
If we get a little further into it.
That's great.
Presenting that.
Yeah, beautiful. That's fine.
Wonderful.
That'd be great.
I have one other future agenda item, and I know, I think, Mr. Oliver has brought this up already. The legislature, I think, is going to sit down again in January to look at the Chapter 70 formula, and I know a number of, we have a number of school committees have passed resolutions and sent that to the state legislature in support of that. And I'm wondering if maybe, given that they're supposed to start that up again in January, if we might not want to put that on our next agenda.
Yeah, because we're, yeah, because they're going to be coming in.
To talk about and potentially pass a resolution to send along to them.
Yeah, because they're, they're in a, they're coming up on a new cycle.
Correct.
It's a two, it's a two-year cycle, so they're coming up.
Yeah, they're going to pick that back up again in January. So I think it would be timely for us to.
That'd be very timely, sure.
Do that in our December meeting, and then have it.
If some, yeah, let's, let's do that. Somebody find the wording that we need.
I can look and see if I can find it. I'm sure MASC has.
MASC has it. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, again, I'm, I'm good, I'm good with that.
Okay, good.
All right. Beautiful. Anything else? Okay, we're good. All right. Our next meeting is going to be two weeks from tonight. That is Monday, December 10th, at 6:30 here in the Quinn Community Room. And that, that being said, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Silent.
Moved by Mr. Oliver, second by Ms. Amaral. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing, none. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.